Good evening and welcome to Planning Commission regular meeting for Wednesday, June 26, 2024. I now call this meeting to order if you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, will you call roll?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Clement? Commissioner Ladoo?
Here.
Commissioner Wellitt?
Here.
Commissioner Suther? Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Maloney?
Here.
Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the May 22, 2024, regular meeting. I can now ask for an approval of minutes from that meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a recommendation. We approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
And do we have to vote on that one? Okay. Denise, can you call a roll?
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Wellitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladoo?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
All right. Add number four, the public hearing, UDC Omnibus Amendment Number Four. Let's see, I now open the public hearing. The provisions of the City Municipal Code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Kenyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. Can we now have a staff report from the city planner?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This evening we are here to consider a draft ordinance we are calling Omnibus Four that would amend various portions of Title 17. For reference, we bundle a number of these together under one ordinance and present them to both Planning Commission and Council. We have done three previous ones, one in 2021, two in 2022, and this one here in 2024. So, this particular one is amending street-side setbacks in the G.C. General Commercial Zone District. Ground-mounted solar is a principal use. It is creating some regulations or changing some regulations regarding fence height in street-side yards and concerning signs. Now, the city currently requires a maximum street-side setback in the G.C. General Commercial Zone District of 25 feet. Now, during the processing of the site plan for the new Arby's Restaurant at 1,004 Royal Gorge Boulevard, it was discovered that this maximum street-side allowance makes programming a site where you are providing both parking and a drive-through lane for a restaurant extremely difficult to comply with. And that's the 25-foot street-side minimum there, or maximum there. Now, the Arby's site plan went before the Board of Adjustment for a variance on the maximum setback in October of 2023. In granting the applicant's variance request, the Board of Adjustment noted that the recent pattern of development pertaining to Royal Gorge Boulevard and the G.C. Zone District lots along Royal Gorge Boulevard has included restaurants with drive-through lanes, and therefore it recommended that the UDC potentially be amended to eliminate the maximum street setback requirement because we can be reasonably anticipated that this pattern of development that includes restaurants, not just Arby's, but also the Starbucks and the Dairy Queen that have also developed previously, and we would anticipate that there are probably going to be lots that develop for restaurants in the near future. So, the recommendation from the Board of Adjustment was that the UDC potentially be amended to remove this requirement. So, the first proposed amendment under Omnibus Four is the removal of the maximum street-side setback in the G.C. General Commercial Zone District. Second proposed amendment pertains to ground-mounted solar arrays under the category of a principal use. Right now, they are allowed as an accessory use in the UDC, which means you will have something else on the property as the principal use, and the ground-mounted solar is in support of that principal use. Now, it was discovered when we were contacted by an energy company recently that the UDC does not contain any provisions for ground-mounted solar arrays as a principal use of a property in any zone district citywide. Now, this is in contradiction to the fact that in 2019, the city did process a solar array as a principal use of property located on either side of South Street, west of Field Avenue. And you can actually see the map there. Sorry, I'm afraid the text is covering it up. But this is in an area on either side of the South Street right-of-way, west of Field Avenue, and we have discovered since it went in that there are some benefits to solar arrays as a principal use of a property. Granted, they are fairly large, but they don't tend to generate a lot of noise. They don't tend to generate a lot of traffic volumes, and provided that they are not building structures that are particularly high, they seem to be compatible with a variety of land uses around it. So, we had some conversations about potentially adding ground-mounted solar energy collection system as a principal use. And so, the ordinance that you're being presented with in draft form this evening makes a couple of changes. First, as a principal use of property, what we've done is take the use table defined in 1703-040B for residential zone districts, and we have added solar energy collection system ground-mounted as a conditional use in all residential zone districts. The rationale behind this is that most properties that are going to go under consideration for a ground-mounted solar array will need to be acreage properties because you're going to want to put a number of solar arrays in order for this to actually be economic to the energy provider, the energy collection company. So, we've made it a conditional use permit in the residential districts, which is considered an administrative review process. It's not outright permitted. There is a notification that happens to all property owners within a certain radius of the intended use, and while it's under review, neighbors who are concerned about it have the opportunity to examine the application materials, and if they have any concerns, they can let staff know. And if there are reasonable concerns, we can impose that on the application. Now, in non-residential zones, we ran into another problem. First of all, we had no such land use category in the non-residential use table in 1703-040C such as utility, infrastructure, and related uses. So, the first thing we need to do was create one and remove three uses that are currently identified as being under vehicle-related uses into this new use category. That would include utility distribution elements, water treatment transmission and distribution lines, and wireless service facilities. Once we created this new category, we would then add solar energy collection systems ground-mounted as another use type under utility, infrastructure, and related uses. And in this case, what we would do is very carefully regulate where it was going to be allowed. So, under this use table, the only zone district in a non-residential sense where it's permitted is the industrial zone, I. In OPR, Open Space Parks and Recreation, and in Business Park, it's considered a conditional use permit, which is the same as how it's treated in residential. But in G.C. General Commercial and N.C. Neighborhood Commercial, it's a special review use. This is an application type that does go to Planning Commission and City Council for formal approval, and it is not allowed at all in the C.V. Central Business District. The rationale behind this was so that we did not want to see our commercially available land potentially being eaten up by uses that would not potentially generate jobs or sales tax revenue. So, these needed to be very carefully examined when they came forward to the city. Now, finally, in both, you will notice that there is a notation of additional regulations, 1705-130A. This is an addition that's being put into the chapter of the code dealing with additional use provisions. And again, it mirrors what's allowed for ground-mounted solar as an accessory use. And that has to do with the fact that the solar panel arrays can't exceed a certain maximum height. They have to have a certain clearance of at least 12 feet off the ground, and they have to be set back from property lines at least 10 feet. So, these aren't overly difficult, but we found that they tend to work for this particular kind of use. The third proposed amendment involves fences in residential areas. Fences installed on residential properties with two street fretches, if the homeowner wants the fence on the secondary street side to be a consistent six feet tall, it must be set back a total of 10 feet from the street side right-of-way. It has been observed that this 10-foot separation creates a maintenance gap, which becomes a code enforcement issue. Attempting to do something to address that, what we have done is proposed a third change under this Omnibus Four, which would remove the 10-foot separation requirement specified in Section 1705-130A. Fence height could then be placed at the edge of the right-of-way. However, the height of the fence can only be six feet once the fence has reached the 25-feet front yard setback line. Forward of that, it would have to remain a maximum of four feet and be at least 50% Now, the final set of changes that have been proposed involves signage. The fourth proposed amendment would amend Chapter 1707, which is the city's sign code. Planning Commission may recall that in the summer of 2023, Council repealed the state of emergency that was put in place during the COVID pandemic. Upon this repeal, staff was directed to recommence enforcement of the sign code, which had been deliberately left lax during the pandemic in an effort to help support businesses, particularly businesses on Main Street. The first item staff acted upon under the recommencement of sign enforcement were feather-flag signs, which as currently written are prohibited in the C.V. Central Business District. This created a backlash among merchants along the Main Street corridor who were using feather-flag signs, and Council ordered a moratorium under the enforcement until an agreement with the merchants could be achieved. Negotiations regarding the sign code have then occupied most of the last year regarding this issue. The nine proposed modifications under the sign code are what have ultimately taken the time with the downtown merchants and representatives of the city, including some representatives of the City Council. So, what are those changes? Well, first, the modifications to sign code amend Section 1707-050E. This increases the area allowance for projecting signs from six square feet to 12 square feet. Next, Section 1707-050F is amended to increase the area allowance for awning or canopy signs. Currently, such signs can cover a maximum of 50% of the surface area of an awning or canopy. This amendment increases that allowance to 75%. Section 1707-050G is also amended to increase the maximum area for permanent window signs, currently at 25% of the window surface area, which may be covered with signage. This amends it to allow for a maximum of up to 50%. Next, Section 1707-060A2, which governs display periods for temporary sign types, is amended so that the temporary signs in Chapter 1707 have the same duration and period as temporary signs in riverfront zoning. That section of the code is 1704. That is, you have five periods of display per calendar year with each period lasting 14 days. That's a total of 70 calendar days per year for temporary sign displays. Feather-flag signs are regulated under Section 1707-060D, have additional requirements that have been added to them. They can only be displayed during business hours. They must be located within 15 feet of the entrance to the storefront located on the same lot. Must be placed within an amenity zone or in such a way as to ensure a minimum pedestrian clear zone of 48 inches in the sidewalk. Cannot be placed within two feet of the face of the curb. Cannot be placed so as to impede vision triangles at intersections, and cannot be illuminated. Next, Section 1707-060E4D amend sandwich board signs to also specify that they must be located in an amenity zone. A new section for temporary sign is hereby created. These are flag signs. These are going to be created under Section 1707-060I, and will have these requirements associated with them. A flag sign cannot exceed 12 square feet, four feet by three feet. It cannot protrude above the roof line of a building. One flag is permitted per 12 feet of linear frontage along a street. Flags must be secured to the building and maintain a clear zone below them of at least seven feet, and they cannot project more than three feet from the building to which they are attached. Finally, Chapter 1713 in the definition section of the UDC is amended to create definitions specifically for amenity zone and flags, consistent with the rest of these recommendations here. And with that, per the notice requirements for text amendments to Title 17 as specified in Table 1710-030C3D, this hearing has been advertised with a published notice on the city's website for at least 15 days prior to the Planning Commission hearing. As of today, staff has not received any mail or email concerning these proposed amendments, although I will tell you that we do have someone in the audience who has some questions that they would like to raise. And so, staff is therefore recommending that Planning Commission, following a public hearing on this request, recommend that City Council approve the draft ordinance being called Omnibus Four, making the four categorical modifications to Title 17. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that Planning Commission may have. And I do believe we have members of the public here as well.
Yeah, I guess let's start with comments from the audience. Are there any, if you can state your name, I guess, address for the record?
Sure. Aaron Maliko. I live on the 300th Block of Macon, and I have a business at 301 Main Street. When I was just looking over the proposed changes, I just noticed some potential conflicts and some omissions that came up in previous meetings. We had talked about making sure that there was something in the ordinance that said that the feather flags had to be in some kind of portable base that would be brought in at night. Right now, we have several cases of feather flags being strapped to bicycle racks and public trash cans, and I think that we should have something in here that addresses that specifically. There was previously language in the ordinance that said that the feather flags had to be removed if they were ripped or faded, and that's been taken out. So, I have a concern about that. And then, the other issue was that in the Section 11-5, let me see, oh, it's the part that says it's placed in the amenity zone. It says it has to be placed, oh, 11-5C must be placed in amenity zone or placed to maintain a minimum pedestrian clear zone. But in the paragraph above that, in paragraph four, it says that feather signs shall be located a minimum of five feet from all property lines and rights-of-way, and an amenity zone is in the right-of-way. So, you can't place it five feet from the right-of-way and place it in the right-of-way. So, I think that's a conflict. So, those were my only issues, but Patrick said he would look into it, so.
So, and I'd like to ask Austin to weigh in here as well. My understanding is that the draft language that we had prepared about a specified kind of base, I don't think, I think in discussions, there was a general consensus that we didn't want to be formulaic about what kinds of bases would be acceptable. We kind of wanted to leave that to the individual merchants, but that what we did want to do was prevent them from attaching the signs specifically to street furniture, planter boxes, that sort of thing. We also didn't want them trying to, in some cases, we have a merchant now who is trying to drive a pipe into a crack in the sidewalk and operate the, or display the feather flag that way within this pipe, and we don't want that either. Austin, do you have other recollections of why we took that out?
I think the primary reason we took it out was to match the language in your other district. I can't remember the name of the other district.
Riverfront zoning.
Right. So, this language matches the riverfront zoning, and I think in those conversations with the business owners downtown and staff, it seemed like the most amicable solution was to say, let's just copy what we have today in that zoning and apply it here. But this is totally a policy decision. If the Planning Commission wants to recommend something different, we can certainly add that as a condition tonight.
So, does the current language prevent them from attaching it to public fixtures or?
Well, the current language in the code doesn't allow the display of feather-flag signs in the Central Business District at all. So, technically, any display of a feather flag between First and Ninth Street on Main is not permitted at all, no matter how they're displaying it. I think the intent of this is to ensure that street furniture and planter boxes and, you know, cracks or odd surfaces in the right-of-way where people are currently displaying them, this would discourage that.
And for clarity, it says, yeah, shall be secured to a building, or to a building, and maintain seven-foot clearance above any public right-of-way.
That's a flag as opposed to a feather flag.
Feather.
Can you remind me of where the language is that prevents them from attaching it to public fixtures?
I think that language is taken out.
So, it's totally taken out. So, it may have been too, like, maybe it was too far this way, and then it's gone too far that way. Maybe you need to come in the middle a little bit.
It may be that we should probably put that back in, Austin.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly don't think it's a bad idea.
And in fact, in addition to putting that back in, we can put the language back in about feather signs shall be maintained in good condition. And if we want these to mirror between our Euclidian zones and riverfront zones, we can probably just add it into the sections in riverfront zoning, too.
It seems like in our conversations with the merchants, they were amicable to having those signs be kept in good condition.
Mm-hmm.
And removing them at night. Was there other conversations that we weren't a part of that made those changes?
Well, there are other concessions that the city has made that aren't necessarily regulatory in nature. For instance, we've talked about various sign programs where we would put directory signs at each of the blocks along Main Street. We have talked about, you know, including building signage, like projecting signs or wall-mounted signs as part of a facade improvement application that the URA would ultimately approve. So, we've got a number of other incentive packages that we are offering the merchants that aren't regulatory in nature and therefore don't show up in an ordinance.
Can you clarify the display period? You know, it's a maximum 14 days, no more than five times in a calendar year. So, if they put it out for two days, and then they take it down, that is one of their five blocks that have a maximum of 14 days.
Yes, we have indicated to them that, because one of the concerns that was raised is, well, what if we have bad weather on one day or something? Well, okay, we're willing to give them, if, you know, a 14-day period of time, a two-week period of time, there are three days that they can't display a sign for whatever reason. If they talk with us and let us know that they weren't able to because of high winds or whatever the reason, we would be willing to add those three days into the next permit issuance to give it back to them.
And so, if you fly the feather flag on days one and two, take it down for three and four, you can then fly it for five through 14?
Fly it through five through 14, and if you want to add the two days you missed to that period, you can. If you want to hold on to it and add it to a future period, you can.
Okay. Seems like a logistical nightmare.
Well, we have a new project tracking piece of software that includes permits for signs, and it will track this by address.
Do you have to pull a permit to fly a feather flag?
You will have to pull a permit. Even temporary signs require a permit. So, there will be a big education campaign that begins about this once Council has taken a look at the ordinance and if they adopt it.
And what's the purpose of requiring a permit?
Well, primarily, first and foremost, for tracking purposes, to make sure no one is exceeding the allotted minimum. It's on temporary signs. Obviously, for permanent signs, we've got standards about maximum area that a sign can have. We've got standards about, you know, you can't have lighting that creates a glare or a dangerous situation to someone driving by in a right-of-way. We have to make sure that those standards are maintained, and the permit process is the way you do that.
Do you have the manpower for that, micromanaging?
I don't know that I would call it micromanaging. We get, right now, an average of a couple of permits a week, so it's not severely overloading us. I would imagine that as we move forward with implementing this, there will probably be an immediate bump in activity in the short term that hopefully settles out.
Is there?
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Is there a fee for this temporary sign?
I think the fee for the temporary sign is a flat $15. The fee for permanent signs is based upon the valuation of the sign. There's a sliding scale associated with it. Just curious.
Are there any other public questions, comments?
I just had the question about the paragraph four conflicting with the amenity zone and paragraph five. I don't think we addressed that.
So, we did add a section in Chapter 13 that defined amenity zone.
Right, as part of a right-of-way.
Do you, Austin, do you think that addresses that?
Not totally following that issue. Can you explain that?
Okay, so, a paragraph was removed about, or no, it was left in.
It's left in.
It's left in, higher up in the, under location. Feather flag, feather signs shall be located a minimum of five feet from all property lines, rights-of-way, and utility easements, shall not block points of ingress or egress, et cetera. So, that would seem to indicate that you can't put feather signs in right-of-way. So that would seem to indicate that you can't put feather signs in right-of-way. And what we're doing is now saying, okay, in an amenity zone, in right-of-way, you can put them.
So that's language currently in the code not touched by this ordinance?
Correct, that's paragraph D4, 1707060D4.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Yeah, that's a good catch, we should, we should change that.
Okay.
Any other additional comments or questions prior to closing the public hearing? If you can state your name and address, we've never seen you before, so.
I'm Patrick Mulroney, no. I'm Preston Troutman, and since I don't get a vote anyway, I was wondering if, you know, there's a lot of things in businesses that you do, and what's going to happen is you're going to do a sale and go, oh darn, I need to get that permit from the city. Could a possibility be that that's done online?
It is online.
It's online, so you can do that then. And I do think you're creating a nightmare with someone having to go out in our manpower and measuring four inches and five inches and one foot this way and five feet that way. I think that is just horrible, and I agree that we don't intend to lie, feather signs, but I do, I think they're fine. But I think, I think you're creating a real problem, and of course, someone, and especially the mayor's going to hear about it, and I, I just don't know if that's the right thing to do, but.
Yeah, I don't think I want to see a, you know, getting too excessive, but we also need to be aware of free-for-all. If you have people driving stakes into the sidewalks, and if there's pavements into the public right-of-way, then that's a problem as well, that we need to have, to make sure that we cover, so there needs to be a proper balance. Balancing heavier towards the, probably the business owners.
You'd be leaning towards what?
Towards the business owners, just with reasonable expectations for the most important safety.
In what regards?
As far as like not putting stakes into the sidewalks, crevices, or adhering to public fixtures and things like that, you also can't have a free-for-all, but you also don't want to be over, have a heavy hand either.
I think the goal here is to not make it look tacky. I think aesthetically, the business owners downtown, from what I've heard, don't care if everyone has feather flags or not, so I think it's from the outside of business owners. But we're relying on those business owners to kind of regulate this and make sure that other people's flags are not torn or in the right-of-way.
See, I would argue that unless we put standards in here, the merchants trying to regulate this themselves is probably not going to work. We've already had anecdotal evidence that some of the merchants are not listening to other merchants when it comes to the condition and the location of the feather flag they're putting.
There's always, already animosity between some merchant owners, and this could be used as a weapon against each other, so I think that it'd be better to have a neutral party.
So it comes down to, is the city able to regulate this?
The city is able to regulate this. If it turns out that we need to bring on additional staff to help enforce this, that'll be something that, you know, internally, we talk about and maybe go to council about, you know, a budget increase next year to bring staff on and train them to help with enforcement on this. At this point, I don't know that we've got a clear handle that it's going to be an enormous bump that will be, you know, permanent, so we are playing that one by ear, but yes, I think the city has the tools to be the enforcement arm for this.
Hmm, that sounds excessive, to be hiring extra staff, there's lots for feather flag regulation, there's a lot of other things we need to worry about.
I don't know that it's just feather flags, and bear in mind, we're not just talking about feather flags on Main, we're talking about all of the other places around town that are displaying feather flags.
Oh, man, I hope the feather flag fit, it's just a fad that we can move on from.
No, I just recently drove across the country, and I'll tell you, there were some towns that looked horrible with signage and some towns that looked really nice, and I guess you just have to put those standards in place.
I know, that's a good point, because usually when you go to the places that look really nice, it's not because people decided to do that for themselves, it's because they had to.
Correct, yeah.
Any additional public comments?
On that issue, or just the amendments period?
On the whole omnibus. Council or commission will further discuss.
I had a question, Patrick, about the comment that you were making during your presentation about the, in housing developments about solar panels.
Mm-hmm.
If I understood the language in this correctly, and if I understood you correctly, if I owned a lot next to my house, I could put up a solar panel if I requested, I could put up a lot full of them, as long as they met the code on the height and all that.
Well, yes, right now, you have the ability, if you own a lot with a home on it, to put solar, a solar array out there as an accessory to the residence.
But the lot adjacent to my house, I can also put panels on that?
You can't put it on a lot you don't own.
Well, I know, but if I own, if I own an acre lot that my house sits on, I got panels on, I own the lot next door so no one can live there, because I like my space, am I able to put solar panels on that whole lot?
Yes, provided that you, and this would be the only use, I mean, if you decided at some point to ever put a different use there, you'd have to remove the solar array panels, and they'd have to go back to being accessory. But yes, if you did own two lots adjacent to one another, and you wanted to put a solar panel array as a principal use on that vacant lot, you could do that. You are foreclosing any other use happening on it if you do that, though.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the neighbors, you said that's a conditional, like they'd have to have a conditional use permit, so the neighbors have a say if they would
Yes.
like to have a solar garden in the middle of the residential neighborhood.
And they may ask for something like, they may ask for something like fencing around it to screen it from view, landscaping, that sort of thing.
Right.
It seems kind of gross.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that whole part correctly, because I see, I already see somebody doing that.
What would your feelings be if you had a neighbor?
If I lived next door to it?
Yeah.
By all means, put solar panels up. I'm going to say this, if it were me wanting to put solar panels up and I owned a lot, and that's the total use for it, it would be like the city telling me, no, we don't want you to save energy, and it would be a contradiction to everything we talk about.
What about your neighbors?
Well, the neighbors is living in the city, so there's a give and take with city life. You can't always have everything you want in the city. Now, if you move to a rural area, you've got a lot more choices.
Yeah. Just got that grumpy old neighbor next door that doesn't like anything other than progress.
It's kind of like the sign thing.
Yeah.
Is there a minimum lot size that this could be considered for, or could it be?
It would be whatever the minimum lot size is per the residential district, so for instance, in RL, I believe that's 15,000 square feet. It has been our observation that when someone wants to come and put a solar panel array as the principal use of a property, they want acreage, they want, you know, at least a full acre, if not more, for the simple matter that in order to make the use economic, they need to put enough panels out there where they've actually got a surplus of energy that they're creating.
So it's a revenue generator, not just for self-sufficiency?
Yes, yes.
I guess it's a private property, they can do what they want with it.
Well, not totally do what you want, but if you want solar panels, hey, save energy.
And a quick point of clarification, you had mentioned the clearance under a panel at 12 feet?
I think it's 12 inches.
12 inches?
12 inches.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, the height, I think, was six feet, or, yeah, it was six feet, the clearance under them has to be at least one foot.
Okay, so adjacent six-foot fence would reasonably block?
Yes.
Well, let me ask a seemingly silly question, what's a one foot for?
Uh...
Little animals would be able to get through.
Squirrels aren't very tall.
You got the kitty cat.
Raccoons, racers.
They need to be out.
I think the idea is we want them to just not be touching the ground arbitrarily, we would like some separation. I don't know that there's a magic to the 12 inches, but I think that the idea is, since these, sometimes these are panels that can actually move to follow the sun, they want a clearance level associated with them.
Weed control.
It'd probably be easier to do weed control with some clearance.
Yeah, weed control, so nothing catches on fire.
All right, any additional further discussion from commission? I guess officially I now close the public hearing.
Didn't we have a fence? Can we talk a little bit more about the fencing?
Sure.
Are we, the fencing for, is just on houses that are on street corners?
It's where you have two frontages on a street.
Can you go over that just one more time?
So you've got two frontages, the, obviously, the front yard where the 25-foot setback is met, and then you've got a side street, and the idea is that what we're saying is on the side street, right now, if you want to put a six-foot fence up, you have to be into your property 10 feet. That creates a 10-foot strip that, it's been our observation, doesn't get maintained very well or very rigorously, and can become a code enforcement issue because of that. Weeds, hasn't been mowed in a while, so there's excessive growth, can attract, in some cases, debris and junk looking there, so we would rather remove that strip, and so the compromise is, all right, you can now put your fence up to the side lot line, you don't have to have the 10-foot setback, but your six-foot height can only go up to where your 25-foot front yard setback happens, and then from there, the height of the fence has to reduce to four feet, and it has to be a 50% visibly permeable fence.
For traffic site?
Well, it, it's not just for traffic and site, but in front yards, we want less, we're trying not to have a fence that, you know, enclaves off the house. There should be some curb appeal to the property, and a lower fence is what allows for that.
It seems like there needs to be a higher purpose for public safety and traffic safety, too, because I know that there's a lot of conversation amongst residents and council members of a desire of higher fence heights in general, especially for protection against deer.
There were some lengthy conversations about fence heights and deer last year, and so...
I don't think they've expired, unless something's happened since I've been around.
Well, I get the sense that council decided not to move forward with making any changes to the height limitations, so we haven't proposed any here, all we're doing is saying, let's see if we can find a way to do away with this maintenance gap.
Is that true?
Is what true?
That the council wants to retire discussions about fence heights?
I don't think we've had that discussion since I've been on, but I just will comment on that, a six-foot fence in a front yard would look ridiculous, it would look like a...
I know, there's a lot of people that want them, I'm not saying I like it, but just want to make sure we're sensitive that there have been some lengthy conversations around this.
The 10 feet, eliminating the 10 feet, I agree with, in the backyards, past the 25-foot from the front yard, because 10 feet is a big chunkier backyard, if you're just on a regular residential lot. But having a six-foot fence, like I live on a corner, if I had a six-foot fence around my house, I would look like I was, you know, ready for the apocalypse or something, it would be, it would look ridiculous.
Well, one of us, it was to protect from pedophiles, but either way.
Well, you can protect the back of your house with a six-foot fence to the, to the property line like we're talking about, and your front yard would just have to be standard as we are now.
An interesting aspect of that is just outside the city limits, and I know it's outside, there are several six-foot fences in front yards.
Yeah.
And they, how would I say, actually look like a fortress.
That's, that's what, that's my point.
Putting a moat around it would make it a castle.
Right, yeah.
But I think that's the intent behind the homeowner, too.
Yeah, true.
I just wanted to call attention to that, because I know that has been a pretty touchy subject, and I want to be really sensitive, that it might still be...
I can recall, I can recall some study sessions with council, late 2022, early 2023, on fence height subjects, and I do not get the sense that from those conversations there was a consensus to amend the code with respect to fence height, so all we're...
Fence height in front yards, but they were open to backyard heights.
Um, I, again, I don't get the sense that there was a consensus opinion on backyard fence heights either. Six-foot seemed to be where it got left. Now, we can explore that in the future, I mean, if council wants to talk about increasing it, we can certainly do that, but that wasn't the intent behind this change to fencing standards.
Okay.
Any additional commission discussion? All right, I now call for a motion and a second to recommend approval to city council on the, on the inordinance of the city of Canyon City amending Title 17 of Canyon City Municipal Code concerning sides, street-side setbacks in the GC District, solar as a principal use, fence height in side yards and signs.
Commissioner, I move for that approval with the amendments to the feather flags at adding some additional language to the public fixture, you know, adhering to public fixtures and stuff to address Aaron's concerns.
Can you specify, as stated on the record in, in the planning commission hearing?
Well, let's see, what was our language that we were talking about? It was just including some...
I think if you reference it in your motion, that will be enough for us to go back and listen to the...
I'd like to reference the discussion of adding a little bit more to that code so that there's a little bit of oversight on where, what those are, those flags are attached to, or not.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion and the second? Hearing none, Denise, will you call rule?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallitt?
Aye.
This, so now calls for a motion and a second to recommend approval to city council for the special review use?
No, there shouldn't be a special review use, sorry.
Right, okay, we will scratch that.
I recycle staff reports.
Gotcha.
That was probably left in there. I'm trying to be green with my paper usage.
Save energy.
Sounds good. Agenda item number five, announcements and discussion items, we do have election of chair and vice chair for 2024, 2025, planning commission, calendar year.
I am going to leave this up to planning commission, you don't have to take a vote tonight, obviously, you're down two members who are absent tonight, and then we are lacking a vice chairman since Randy's departure from Canyon City. So you don't have to take a vote tonight, we are currently advertising to fill the vacancy that we have on planning commission, maybe you want to wait for a new person to come on board before you take a vote, maybe you just want to make sure you've got all of the existing planning commission members in the meeting before you take a vote, but we probably will at some point need to determine how to handle the vacancy at vice chair.
And what is the schedule for the appointment for the empty chair?
So I believe we have now been advertising to fill the vacancy since the last planning commission meeting, May 22nd, that was about the time we were notified, so I believe there's been about a month that it's been out there getting circulated. I have not been advised by the city clerk at this point that we have had interest expressed in filling that. Obviously, such interest gets directed to council, and council then selects if we've got more than one person who has applied for the vacancy, so I don't have any updates to give you as to whether or not we actually have people who've expressed interest right now.
Okay, so the earliest council would appoint would be like July 14?
The earliest, yeah, the agenda for council's July 1st meeting has already been published, so the earliest we would have council considering something would be July 15th, and if you know of anyone who might be interested, please feel free to reach out.
I know someone named Aaron. Did we reach out to, there were a lot of really great candidates that applied last time, do you know if we specifically reached out to them?
I, I left all of that in Cindy's hands, since she does the outreach. So it's up to you, you don't have to take a vote tonight, I just put that on there as a placeholder on the agenda. So it's up to you. You, you don't have to take a vote tonight. I just put that on there as a placeholder on the agenda.
I just moved, I'd move that we table it till, um, we get some people on board to, so we can have a full hearing. You know, full group of people kind of deciding instead of, instead of somebody just kind of getting named because they're not here type thing, you know?
I have to agree, it'd be nice to have the other commission members here.
Yeah.
At least the ones that are filling positions, whether we have the vacancy filled or not.
Yeah, you're doing a great job. I think we'll be fine for a little while.
All right. Hearing no objections. I think we will postpone chair and vice chair elections.
Okay.
Uh, any other announcements?
Nothing from staff, sir.
All right. Uh, in that case, we are adjourned.